Good evening, and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the June 17th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We will begin tonight with a special recognition for a talented group of graduating seniors who are ending their term with the Boston Student Advisory Council, also known as BSAC. These students have proven to be true leaders and powerful advocates for their peers. We are so proud of them, and while they'll be greatly missed, we know that they will go on to do great things for the Boston community. So I'm not sure if we're going to go down on what we're going to do, but why don't we all go down?
Test, test.
I'm going to do my very best to pronounce them, so please, if I say it incorrectly, please correct it. So I'm going to read what it says on all of them, but the first one is going to Luji Ajela. Is that correct? Right, what it says. So the Boston School Committee extends its deepest appreciation to Luji Ajela, Mental Health Subcommittee, Boston Student Advisory Council, and New Mission High School, Class of 2024, for providing a strong, consistent voice for her fellow students in the Boston Public Schools. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in extending their appreciation to Ms. Ajela for influencing and assisting students to effectively form, evaluate, and understand the district policies that impact their daily lives, and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. All right. Okay. The next one is Shahid Anazeh. Is that close? All right, so you are on the Anti-Racism Subcommittee Member of the Boston Student Advisory Council and graduate Boston International Newcomers Academy, Class of 2024. Congratulations. Our next is our very own Diego Maida, who is our Boston School Committee Representative and the Education Equity Subcommittee Member and also a graduate, Class of 2024, Boston Arts Academy. And we have, is Jari Barry here? All right, so Jari Barry was BSAC writer of the Boston Student Advisory Council and a graduate of the Boston Latin Academy, Class of 2024. Zina James, who is also on the Anti-Racism Subcommittee Member and graduate Tech Boston Academy. And lastly, Kaylee Rianoso, who is on the Adultism Subcommittee Member and Boston Latin Academy, Class of 2024. Let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you all. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2024, school committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. So this being our last school committee meeting before the end of the year, my report will be a little bit longer but full of some really wonderful things. So good evening to everyone, to our audience as well. Tonight, I would like to begin with exciting news from the BPS Athletics, because yesterday was a historic afternoon. The English High School Eagles won the MIAA Division V State Baseball Tournament, seven to one over Georgetown at Polar Park in Worcester. This is the first time that the City League Champions, sorry, the City League Champions in baseball also won a state title since 1971. So we just, congratulations to the team. It's been an amazing year of athletics with lots of championships for us with our BPS teams, but this was a particular historic one. As the school year for 2023-24 comes to a close on Friday, June 21st, I'd like to take the opportunity to talk a bit about our progress this year and review some of our accomplishments and highlights. We are continuing to build the academic foundation that will support the district's major shifts into this next year. Our district-wide implementation of inclusive education, an increase in bilingual education programming, growing our early college and career pathways, and continuing the expansion of the hub schools model. We're making our vision for inclusive education a reality by implementing inclusive classrooms across our schools for students in K zero, K one, K two, and Grade seven and nine. And our schools will continue to engage in our inclusive planning process next year. BPS will add five new DESI-approved programs dedicated to serving multilingual students. These include three newcomer programs at Brighton, East Boston High School, and Trilston High School. We will continue to make investments to ensure that all students have access to native language instruction in the classroom. BPS continues expanding, or will continue to expand, our early college and career pathways programming to help students earn the college credits they need to graduate and pursue their dreams. Bunker Hill Community College is expanding its partnership with Trilston High School. Roxbury Community College is establishing a new partnership with Boston International Newcomers Academy, or BINC, the Margarita Meneses Academy, and English High School to expand access to college coursework for our multilingual learners. And UMass General Brigham is expanding its partnership with the Edward M. Kennedy Academy to help create more pathways for our students to join the healthcare profession. Currently, we have 14 hub schools, and we're expanding. Next year, we will add an additional six. I'm proud of the progress we've made on expanding our model, including our transformative work at the newly renamed Ruth Batson Academy, which is our first university-assisted community hub school in partnership with UMass Boston. Ruth Batson students will have unprecedented access to UMass Boston coursework and opportunities, and will partner with talented educators from both institutions and help develop UMass Boston graduate students into future teachers and counselors. This partnership accompanies Ruth Batson Academy's planned renovations to create a state-of-the-art high school campus embedded in the Columbia Point community. Students who are interested in becoming teachers will also be eligible for a new scholarship to UMass Boston. Senior Johanna Pena received the inaugural Robert and Ruth Endowed Scholarship this past year, this current year, which will ensure she receives ongoing support and graduates debt-free. In our Equitable Literacy Initiative, more than 80% of our schools are using high-quality instructional materials in at least one subject. As you heard in our June 5th presentation, we've begun to see an increase in our reading and writing outcomes for students who are using those materials. In transportation, we've made continual progress with our yellow bus transportation services for Boston students. We started the year fully staffed with bus drivers, with nearly 200 more bus monitors than the previous year. We have continued hiring and will end this school year fully staffed with both drivers and monitors, with a strong hiring and training pipeline to maintain full staffing going forward. We've made consistent progress in improving on-time performance, reducing the number of uncovered trips, and reducing missing data. For the FY 23-24 school year, 90% of scheduled morning buses have arrived on time, and 98% have arrived within 15 minutes of the scheduled time before accounting for any of the missing trip data. In our food service division, we've served more than eight million meals this year, cooking and offering daily salad bars at 101 schools. We've launched halal and kosher meals at all 47 sites where the community requested them. And we're focused on local procurement. For example, the first time all 975,000 apples served to our students came from New England. In our Office of Emergency Management, we established this office, which consists of five members. The team is led by Director Christian Trey Woodson and responds to critical and emergency events in the BPS and works to keep our schools safe and welcoming. On the community engagement front, our Community Engagement Advisory Collective, or what we call CAC, saw its biggest growth in membership since its inception, with more than 60 organizations represented and attending bimonthly meetings led by our community engagement team. I also met with dozens of community groups through my community engagement tour this past year. I was able to connect with leaders and representatives of the district's diverse communities to discuss how we can work together to better support our students. Community engagement also includes our internal engagement tour. We want to make sure we listen to the many leaders within our organization leading critical work to support our schools and our students. We will continue the community engagement tours next year as well, and I look forward to listening and learning from community members, students, and our teams. Chronic absenteeism. Overall, we have seen a decrease in chronic absenteeism, somewhere around the 8% to 10%, but we know that there's a lot more to do. That's why earlier this spring, we launched the new Win the Day campaign pilot, which was aimed at significantly improving student attendance rates across 10 schools in Region Eight. The team reached more than 800 students in Region Eight through the campaign and drew them back to school using creative strategies like home visits, transportation support and credit recovery, before-school into-mural sports, including basketball, volleyball, and indoor soccer, which promotes exercise and friendship, and community incentives like visits to the nail and hair salon and local pizza shops. We chose Region Eight due to its high rate of chronic absenteeism and the diversity of the schools, and we'll expand the campaign across other regions next year. This campaign helps our schools think creatively about how to make students feel welcomed and supported and hope to learn from the pilot to scale out that support for 24-25. For teacher hiring, we've hosted 13 recruitment fairs specifically engaging diverse professionals, with over 1,100 candidates attending expressing interest in the BPS. The Bilingual Educator Accelerated Community-to-Teacher Program graduated 24 diverse community members who are provisionally licensed and SEI-endorsed to be hired into our BPS. There are 67 applicants for that same program for 24-25. The BPS Teaching Fellowship graduated 36 first-year educators who are now initially licensed in moderate disabilities and/or ESL so that they may be retained in the district. There are 55 applicants for the SY 24-25 program. And over 50 free MTEL prep courses were held, enrolling 1,000 or more employees, with a 74% pass rate, and provided over 300 exam vouchers. These are all of the ways that we will continue to work with our staff, to support our staff, in terms of their passing the teacher exams and becoming a BPS employee. We continue to also see strong graduation rates for the four-year cohort at 80.5%, especially since the state reinstated the MCAS requirement. This year, BPS had a record number, 350 students, who attended at least one historically black college or university tour. As we continue to engage with students, our extended rate went up to over two points for the students who didn't drop out. They stayed with us. And this is all really important post-pandemic as a way when in other districts you start to see the dropout go up, graduation rate goes down, we're at historic highs in a positive way. In addition to all of these, there were so many moments of joy for our students. We were visited by Gronk, by Jason Tatum, by Wally and Tessie at the annual Red Sox hack giveaway. Our students won five state championships in athletics, played at the Boston Garden, threw the first pitch at Fenway Park, and were recognized with a celebration parade to City Hall. They displayed their incredible artwork and talents around the city and threw visual arts and musical performances, including a show-stopping homage to icon Tina Turner. They visited several countries, including Costa Rica, Montreal, France, Italy, Spain, Portugal, Japan, Dominican Republic, as well as other states such as DC and so forth. They organized and spoke out about issues facing our world and our city while supporting one another. They explored STEM and STEAM and competed in citywide championships. This school year, we welcomed 2,587 students from our migrant families to our city and to our schools. And one of our Burke High School students even flew an airplane for the first time, proving the sky really is the limit for BPS. As we look back toward next school year, as we look toward next school year and continue to plan, I personally am excited for the work ahead. Our mission is grounded in our vision of ensuring that every student in every school has access to high-quality education. I want to thank Mayor Wu and her team, the members of the Boston City Council, and the school committee for working with us as partners this year. I also want to thank our teachers and school and district staff, family students, and numerous community partners for their support this year and their ongoing generosity to our BPS students. We will need everyone's ongoing collaboration to do the work that lies ahead. I hope that everyone finds time this summer to relax, to rest, to recharge. I met with school leaders this morning for the last All Leader PD and just reminded them to make sure they're doing some self-care and taking some time this summer to refuel. I know there's an eagerness to hear about our summer update, and so I'm going to provide you a brief update on all of the planning that's gone on for the summer programming. As you know, we'll begin our summer programming on Monday, July 8th. We're offering more than 125 summer learning academies, course completion, and high school credit recovery programs across 67 BPS facilities. As of June 11th, we've enrolled more than 3,000 students for summer learning academies and more than 1,800 students in credit recovery courses. I want to thank Chief Sanchez for leading the charge. We are focusing our outreach to families in multiple languages and using multiple media outlets through multiple modalities to reach everyone. And in almost every one of the programs, we are in excess of what we've done in the past. So folks, I think our parents and community are really responding to what we're offering. Regarding the hiring, we have 730 fifth-quarter positions across our summer learning academies and high school credit recovery programs. We've submitted more than, or close to, 80% of summer fifth-quarter staffing. These, of course, include teachers, site coordinators, paraprofessionals, community field coordinators, nurses, operations leaders. It's really all positions. And we've had more than 10,000 youth apply to jobs with city departments and nonprofit organizations. About half of them are BPS students. So just a lot of really great work in the summer. D-LAC Conference, these are just a few bright spots. The District English Learners Advisory Committee held its Connect Conference 2024 last week here at the Bowling Building. The BPS Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, or what we call OAM, was honored to welcome keynote speaker Montserrat Galbre, U.S. Department of Education Assistant Deputy Secretary and Director of the Office of Language Acquisition. The Assistant Deputy Secretary delivered an inspiring message to our multilingual learner families who gathered in person for the first time post-pandemic. She spoke about the critical importance of establishing meaningful relationships between our schools and our families, something that we try every day to do here. She also learned about our work to support our multilingual learners and dual language while visiting the Otis and the Yamana Schools in East Boston, where she saw some of the incredible work our school leaders, teachers, students, and families are doing to nurture and elevate the learning experience of our multilingual learners. Many thanks to the Yamana and to the Otis communities for hosting the Deputy Secretary's visit. I also want to thank Member Polanco Garcia for serving as a panelist at the event. On June 6th, BPS hosted its annual Spring Fling, a special inclusive prom hosted by the Office of Specialized Services. Students spent the evening dancing, listening to music, having fun together at Florian Hall in Dorchester. It was a joyful night for all. Students at the Ellis Elementary School this week marked the final session of the youth cycling program. Students received certificates of completion and showed off their bicycle skills. It was pretty amazing to watch the students zipping around on the balance bikes. The youth cycling program actually brings everything, the bikes, the helmets, the instructors, an actual curriculum that we use across the district. The instructors spend two weeks helping students from grades K two through eight learn bicycle safety through lessons, practice, and having fun. And it's such an important life skill for our students to have to be able to learn the city. Students from Boston Arts Academy participated in Boston's twenty-two, twenty-four Pride Parade on Sunday, June ninth. The students constructed the float during the school's intermission period, learning both technical skills and teamwork, and created tie-dye shirts. I'd also like to note that Karina Badalamanti from our Performance Management and Evaluation Team and the co-leader of LGBTQ affinity group also volunteered with the Boston Pride for the people. Thank you for representing BPS at this year's Pride. This is certainly graduation season. As you know, every single night, there's been one or more graduations in days. I've had the honor of attending several of them, particularly Boston Arts, Boston Green Academy, Excel High School. It's really always a thrill for me to see the teachers, the staff, the families, and the students celebrating the hard work of our students and all of their achievements as they make that final walk across the stage. This year, I had the pleasure of watching school committee member Diego Mena cross the stage himself. Congratulations to you for your accomplishments. We know you're going to do some pretty amazing things at Northeastern as you go on to this next step. And one of the things that we sort of stress at the graduations is when you move the tassel, which is a tradition, you're actually stepping from being a BPS student and you're crossing that bridge to becoming a BPS alumni and representing the BPS in a different way. And so I was very proud of Diego and all of his peers as they took that big step. This year's graduates were freshmen, just as a reminder, when COVID-nineteen disrupted their education. And as they made their way through high school, they learned resilience, tenacity, and they learned to expect the unexpected. We're celebrating that perseverance and determination as each student takes their time to cross that stage and moves that tassel. And I know I speak for the entire district when I say I'm proud of every single one of them. In preparation of the merger of the Sumner and Philbrick Schools, the family liaisons pictured here, Deanna Fortin, Reynolds Jean, and Erin O'Brien are leading some creative and fun engagement activities. Students in grades one through six from each of the schools began writing monthly letters to each other since January. The liaisons planned two Penn Pal meetups last week at nearby Healy Park, which included games and blowing bubbles. This innovative kind of relationship-building effort will continue throughout next year. There's so many more things I could include, Chair, but I will stop there and certainly take questions.
Thank you so much. So I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee.
Thank you. So I have just a couple of quick questions, Superintendent. First, you mentioned about food service, and you said, I think you said, one hundred and one schools now have fresh food, including salad bars. And that's fantastic, and we see it when we're out visiting the schools, right? I'm wondering, how do we know, and you don't have to have the answer now, but how many are still doing kind of the prepackaged, they're just not at the point? And I know because we had some restrictions on someone kitchens and other plans next year to be able to finish that off.
I believe, I think it's fourteen schools at this point that there's four that we're not able to put a kitchen into, and then there's another group that we can work to do a modified kitchen. But one of the things that food service is doing is they're going to do a pilot next year of centrally cooking food to then distribute hot food to those school sites. And so they'll do it regionally, so Madison Park may be one of the sites that food is prepared and then to the schools closest to them distributed. So the idea is to really get that hot food across the district, every school.
Great, yeah, because it makes such a difference when you're in the schools. And if Madison Park can also distribute those chocolate cookies that the students make there, they're the best in the city. You mentioned about summer, and I was interested to hear the numbers going up, and I'm intrigued about capacity. You know, are we at capacity in a bunch of programs? And if so, what are we going to do about them? We heard last week, or last meeting in public comment about the Exam School Initiative in the past. And I know in the past couple of years, it has not been filled. And now all of a sudden, we're actually filled. So what are we doing?
That's right. So the E S I, which is the Exam School Initiative, it has a capacity of three hundred. And it has, in the past few years, not filled. This year, we actually have five hundred that have put in for it. So that's a good problem to have. So we're working right now to be able to expand at least probably a hundred seats to start. And you know, my preference would be to be able to clean the waitlist. But we are going to at least be able to get into that waitlist pretty deep. That means additional staff and space and so forth. But the minute we saw that capacity issue, we started acting on it. So Chief Sanchez is on it.
And is the issue funding or teachers or space or accommodation?
Well, yeah, so it's everything, right? The more programming you offer, it's money. We still do have Esther dollars, so we are in a situation where we are able to be able, from the dollar perspective, to support. It is finding the staff kind of late in the season. But we do feel confident that we can at least expand the capacity, probably at least a hundred more students.
And I'm sensitive to the fact that we didn't say it was going to be space limited because we've had the openings the past couple of years, and now, as was pointed out, you know, to us last time.
Right, yeah, I think we see it also with fifth quarter. There are some programs that fill very rapidly, and we're not really able to expand those programs because we work with community-based organizations, and they kind of set the capacity. But E S I is one of ours that we work with internally. It's much like credit recovery, where we just see there to be an extra demand in credit recovery. We would want to respond to that positively to make sure that our high school students are able to make their credits up.
Thank you. And you mentioned graduation season. I love to see the pictures. We collectively honored six students a couple of weeks ago with Green Ghana scholarships, and we were able to be at all of their graduations. I know you were at B G A for them, and Chair Robinson was at Boston Latin Academy. And Ms. Lima Barbosa and I were at Burke, where she was the commencement speaker, and, by the way, valedictorian of her class.
I heard. A lot of valedictorians.
Mentioned, and we honored the student who was from the Burke, as well as the other schools as well. So that was a highlight of the graduation season as well.
Thank you for your report. I appreciate a very thorough report. I have two particular questions, one relating to the report. The other is beyond the scope of the report itself. The first one is, you mentioned there are schools that are within fifteen minutes of the determined arrival. So, and also, there may be a small number of school buses that are late. Those routes are pretty clear to us, right? And we are doing something.
We are, yes. So next year, there were, first of all, Dan and his team and Jackie, they've let the data drive this, so they're constantly looking at which routes are late. We put forward some tier changes. Sometimes it's a five-minute change or a ten-minute change of the school's start time. We've put those forward for next year. They represent a core percent of those late routes. And Dan, if there's anything else, you can certainly come up and contribute to that.
Yeah, I think the Superintendent covered it well, Member Tron. I think the other thing I would say is, relatedly, where we see the biggest challenges every day is the schools that start during what we call the second tier. So this is schools that are an eight-thirty start time or thereabouts. And that's because the greatest proportion of schools start at that time. And so when we look at our overall capacity, that's where we're trying to kind of squeeze the greatest number of routes into, frankly, not enough capacity. And so some of these belltime tier changes that we've talked about for next year will help kind of even things out and distribute things across the tiers a little bit. But that's where our efforts are really focused, is looking at those runs and those trips that are day after day running late, and what can we do about that? Both short-term, you know, to make sure that the students this year are not consistently being impacted, and also thinking, long-term, what do we need to do?
Thank you. Well, the second question, we've been briefed on the contract negotiation with the teachers' union. I'm just interested to know what is the likelihood of success in reaching something soon? We are about eighty items out of disagreement, so.
So, so thank you for the question. So as I said at the last meeting, we have been trying by working with our union partner to, at the table, much earlier than we typically would, so we've been there for about six months. And I think that has really enabled us to do some deeper work that doesn't normally happen, like in the beginning sessions. And I think both parties feel really good about that. There is a bunch that still needs to be worked through. So we'll still continue to work hard and be optimistic about that and work with B T U. I'm not, I couldn't give you a calculation as to the likelihood by June thirtieth, but I think we've indicated our interest to continue during the summer as a way to keep the conversation going and try to continue to make progress in those negotiations. And we will continue to do that. So even if we were to not be able to get an actual final deal for August thirty-first, which is when the contract expires, we will be so much further ahead than where we normally are at this point of time. And then we will continue to work throughout next year on it.
Is there any concession from them regarding the eighty items that we are?
Yeah, so I think both sides are doing their best to understand, deeply understand each other and what, you know, and find that kind of common ground. Anytime you do negotiations, both sides will often put many things out on the table, and then you have to kind of par back and figure out what's really at the core. And I think that's the space they're at, and that's the space we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, and congratulations to all the graduates, for sure. An incredible first step in life. So congratulations to all them, and we look forward to what the future holds. My question is actually going back to what Vice Chair O'Neill was talking about in terms of capacity. Are we seeing any particular trends in increases in enrollment around high school credit recovery? And from a capacity issue, that's something that we as a committee would have to consider as we're thinking about resources towards that.
So we have about eighteen hundred students who are enrolled over, across roughly thirty-four hundred courses. So it's somewhere between two and three courses, right, for each of the students. Last year, I think we served around twenty-one hundred, but that was height of kind of the pandemic coming off. This is probably high for where we would normally be. We'll watch that. Not all the kids that register sometimes show up. We're also doing a couple of newer programming. One with Succeed Boston to really create kind of like a wraparound for students. It's going to be our first year doing it, for students who we want to get, who we know need kind of a three-sixty. And that is, like, get a mentor, job, resume building, academic supports, credit, mental health supports, like really that three-sixty. So we're really also trying to differentiate the type, not just credit recovery, but actually like what kinds of deeper work we can do with young people if we have them over the summer. And I think we're also trying to accommodate high school sites being able to do that on their site because we know high school students don't always travel to another site. So we're trying a couple of different things that we're hoping the yield of who registers is higher because last year was like twenty-one hundred, but you know, I think we ended up only serving about maybe seventeen. So we want to keep all of the students. So I think it's both the capacity and the yield. So, but this is like one of those that if we see more students registering than we have seats for, we'll expand that capacity. I think that's also, it's a good question because it's also what I believe is deeply linked. So as you know, with our graduation rate, and our graduation rate is at the eighty-point-five, which is kind of historic high even from the pandemic, pre-pandemic. But what was more telling was that our fifth-year engagement was up by one point three in our extended engagement, meaning students who are still in the system despite not graduating, was two-point-three percent, which on our high school population is significant. So that's what tells me that the amount of credit recovery we were doing worked because it gave the kids the credits enough to stay in the system to try to get their diploma.
I have an additional follow-up question about summer planning. So the question is, what is the percentage of students who are, families are signing them up versus is there a number of students who thus far have not signed up, but that you would recommend that they do? And I know the time is short. What are we doing about reaching out to those kids for whom this could be a significant?
Right. So it's an interesting question. I think at the school level, we work hand-in-hand with family liaisons, the school counselors, and the school leaders to identify students that we believe would most benefit from the programming. So there's usually, each school has lists of students that they then reach out to. We don't always have access to those lists to then be able to see what percent actually responded or not. We work with the school for them to continue to follow. In terms of the parent piece, you know, that is, you know, we can tell who registered the student, right? Or who approached to register the student. But we wouldn't necessarily be able to tell where the genesis of that came from, whether that was the school encouraging the parent to do it, or whether the parents are our information and then, you know, chose to act on it. We wouldn't necessarily have that. It would be good, we can add questions in the future to the registration, which would say, sort of like when you often, you know, when you're filling out like a web form, it'll say, "I heard about this because..." And I think we could maybe collect the data that way, like they saw something with media or their friend told them, or, you know, their principal recommended, and then try to parse the data back that way.
I know the district took in a number of migrant students over the past year. Not quite sure where people are living for the summer, but are those families also able to participate? And do we have any sense of how that engagement is going?
Yes. So this in particular, I was really proud of the team. Most of the students who are living in shelter are teams went and registered for the February and the April camps. And then very similarly, they're working at the shelter level with the families to make sure that the students have those opportunities outside of the shelter.
All right, thank you all for your comments. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the Superintendent's report is approved. We'll move on to action items. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling twenty-five millions, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Now I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So there's multiple areas of the grants. There's one specific to the chronic absenteeism, and it references, in our notes, this is kind of the Win the Day that we focused on with Region Eight. Again, we're getting some pretty good data on this. There's also one on the food cart. This is coming from B P D A. And this is, it's a cash grant for thirty thousand. And this has to do with supporting the retail carts at two of our high schools. There is a E P A, which is the big one, and that is for the, this is a grant program for the electric buses with zero admissions. That's the twenty-million-dollar grant. There is the SIP grant, and this is the renewal for the SIP grant for the third year. And this really does support the work that we've been trying to do, you know, on SIP. I think in particular, this year, it covers those that are working on SIP outcomes. It covers our P R S, our Problem Resolution System. And then there's an F T E that's attached. And then there's an FTE that's attached to special ed transportation and an analyst. And then there's other dollars that are in there around long-term facility engagement, bilingual programming, a program, a pilot program for tablets on the school buses to be able to be more efficient with the routes, you know, things like that. The, let's see, what else is there? There is an early college incubator grant. This is for startup of early college programming in schools that are just beginning. There's also another early college support grant, so that's for just continued implementation at those sites that have early college. There's a CTE grant, which is a Perkins grant, and that there is particular to our CTE programs at sites like Madison Park, at Boston Arts Academy, has fashion design, Binka, BGA, Burke. And I think we list the high schools that are covered in there. So, I would just encourage the committee, these are all grants that support critical work, good work. And so, I would just encourage the committee for a favorable vote.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
No particular question around this, but curious around the, the seven new electric buses that we're getting. Has there any, been any forethought at this point around the routes that might, that we might get?
I think we have the team coming up for this one.
Mr. Alkins, thank you. So, just to clarify, the question was about the, the buses that we'll get?
Yeah, just if you have any, if at this stage, have you been thinking any about like the particular routes for, for, for those new buses essentially?
Gotcha. Yeah, I'll hand it to Assistant Director of our Contract Ops and Fleet here, Alex, who's really been leading this work.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, everyone. Yes, as part of the grant application, we actually looked at environmental justice factors. So, that is a piece of it in terms of how we deploy these buses to make sure that we're covering every component of the city and all the neighborhoods. So, obviously, we will not be deploying these for a little while. We still have to purchase them. We still have to deploy the charging equipment, install everything at our bus yards. So, we don't anticipate rolling those out until, you know, not next school year, but the following school year. And as we learn more from the current EVs that we're operating, as well as the nineteen additional EVs we're bringing onboard this summer, we'll be able to further analyze and determine how to best address the routing issues.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Question on specific policy matters are not answered this time, but may be the subject of a later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have forty seven speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their times to others. Speakers may, large group addressing the same topics are encouraged to consolidate their remarks and choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. Our first group of speakers are Councilor Weber, Craig Lankhorst, Maria Jesus Fernandez-Diaz, Adam Rudolph and Deidre Manning. Councilor Weber?
Okay, can you hear me? Thank you very much for allowing me to, to speak. My name is Benjamin Weber. I'm the city council from District Six. I represent Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury. I'm here to talk about the planned closure of the West Zone Early Learning Center. You know, I've received over a hundred emails expressing concerns about the plan. You know, while some of those emails are from constituents, some are from outside the district, I think it just speaks to the confusion and concern about, about the plan and the process that's been followed. I've spoken with the administration and I've been told that the closure will save administrative costs and increase the amount of funds being spent directly on our students, which I support. But, and I hope that in reviewing the plan, you ensure that as promised, the closure will result in an increase in early education classrooms, that families will be given preference if they seek to transfer out of the ELC and that the Henigan is made a hub school, which has been a success at the Moonees. But I am concerned about the process here. We've heard about the need to close schools across the district. As a parent of two BPS kids born at the Boston Arts Academy and other at the Curly, I went through the closure of the Mission Hill School. And it, what has been encouraging to me is hearing from the, from BPS that families will be given a year's notice before closures are made.
Thirty seconds.
But what I didn't realize was that in this case and families are, while that is supposed to be going to happen, they're beginning to be given a year's notice, then the decision to close the schools being made in, in less than about five weeks. Families were given notice that the school might close in five weeks or, or the school might close and that only a couple of days notice before this vote. And so, if we're going to be transparent and have a process about closures, we need to think about a predictable timeline where, where people in the community actually understand what's going on. I'm not sure that's happened here and that they're given a chance to weigh in before the decision to close their schools is made. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Craig Lankhorst.
I'd like to thank the Chair and members of the school committee and the superintendent for this opportunity. My name's Craig Lankhorst. I've worked in the Boston Public Schools for the past fifty years, including as a school leader and cluster leader. Was also Chair of the Ward Ten Democratic Committee, proudly serving Mission Hill and Jamaica Plain for twenty five years. Presently, I live in West Roxbury. I have known Al Holland for most of that time. In short, he is my hero and I don't say that gratuitously. I fully support the name of the Burke being changed to the Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. As manager of a dropout prevention program at Dorchester High School, I saw Dr. Holland doing wonderful work at the Burke. I sought advice from him and leaned on him. I often stole his ideas and I tried to steal his staff. It is important to note also that prior to being at the Burke, Dr. Holland served heroically at South Boston High School. At the Burke, Dr. Ha, Dr. Holland blended safety and academics, making sure that all students were supported. He did everything, including roaming, roaming the corridors and attending most school events.
Thirty seconds.
He made sure the Burke worked. Al and I also work as coaches for the male educators of color. In fact, he coached the coaches. In all his endeavors, Dr. Holland put the kids first. No one deserves to have a school named after him more than Al Holland. Thank you sincerely for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Maria Jesus Fernandez-Diaz.
My name is Maria Fernandez. I have been given the gift of being a full-time school psychologist at the Rafael Hernández, a dual-language Spanish-English school. I am grateful that the school sees the value of having a full-time school psychologist and pays approximately half of my salary from their budget. Unfortunately, it is difficult for small schools to cover this cost. This year, I have tested fifty students. For each evaluation, I interview the families, test the student and gather information from the teacher and the, and school records. Students rely on us to find what works, what kind of specialized instruction works for them. I also have twenty-three counseling cases that I see individually or in small groups. Despite how impossible it is to manage this amount of work, even with a full-time position, I am emotionally available for my students if they need a break, are going through a crisis or need support de-escalating. Students depend on us to make it through the school day. Additionally, as a BPS employee, I provide services to all our students since we serve the whole community. I help any student who needs a safety assessment because of suicidal thoughts or a threat assessment, and I also communicate with outside providers to coordinate support. School psychologists are experts.
Thirty seconds.
Are experts in learning, behavior, systems and mental health. Seven school psychologists positions have been cut for next year. The number of professionals should increase, not decrease. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Adam Rudolph. If Adam Rudolph is not here, next speaker is Deidre Manning.
My name is Deidre Manning. I'm a Dorchester resident. My great-grandmother came to this country alone at age seventeen, at a time when signs hung in storefronts saying, "No Irish need apply." She married an immigrant from Canada and started a family. In nineteen eleven, her husband left her, abandoning his five-year-old daughter, my grandmother. The previous death of her son, however, allowed my great-grandmother to be hired as a servant as you could not be employed as a domestic if you had more than one encumbrance. That's a fancy term used by wealthy Bostonians to describe a child. Discrimination based on religion and country of birth meant there were no other options for work for an Irish immigrant with no family to help support her and raise her daughter. Her granddaughter, my mother, encountered discrimination in the late nineteen fifties when she taught at the Hyde Elementary School in Roxbury. My mother had an exceptional student named Jane Dietrich, an eighth grader who got straight A's and always asked for additional work. Jane really wanted to go to Girls Latin, but at the time, you needed a recommendation from the principal and the principal, despite Jane's record of academic achievement, would not provide one, most likely because of the color of Jane's skin. No BPS administrator should be allowed to exclude high-achieving students from educational opportunities. BPS has used the exam school policy to depress enrollment from neighborhoods in tiers six, seven and eight and deprive children, even children of color, English language learners and families with Section Eight vouchers, of the chance to attend one of the very few quality schools in the district. Every exam school applicant should have the same chance of receiving a seat in an exam school, no matter where that child lives. This can be done by allocating the number of seats in each tier based on the number of applicants. By refusing to make the policy equitable despite three years of data, BPS administrators are sending a strong message to families who live in tiers six, seven and eight. That message is, no families in these neighborhoods need apply. The number of applicants in these tiers is lower than it's been in the past because families understand that BPS administrators have put a construct in place.
Thank you.
That prevents their children from receiving a high-quality public education.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. You could please send me your, your testimony. Next group of speakers is Jordan Clark, Deborah Falzoi, Teresa Pregzer, Nathan Pregzer and Erica Herman. Jordan Clark?
My name is Jordan E. Clark. He and Miss pronouns, this is my service dog, Rio. I normally do not introduce him as inclusive action, usually means you just ignore him and act like he isn't there. Yet, as you know, superintendent skipper, ableist microaggressions are a consequence of ignorance. So, I figured I'd try and enlighten, enlighten in an effort to create a more inclusive space. I'm a longtime Dorchester resident and a former Boston Public School teacher and employee. James Baldwin poignantly stated, "I cannot believe what you say because I see what you do." I understand that we are all bound by a universal struggle to free our minds from socialized bias. As a disabled, gay, black, cis man and former BPS employee and teacher of students with disabilities and Equity and Accountability Program Manager in Central Office, I have the privilege to testify at the Boston City Council Committee hearing. My testimony was a deeply personal narrative of facing bias, retaliation and systemic injustice within these storied halls, walls. Despite my dedication and passion for improving our students' outcomes, I've encountered significant challenges, including facing forced administrative leave, denial of access because of my service dog and ultimately termination amidst an ADA interactive process. These experiences highlight the pressing need for clear policies and accountability when persons in positions of leadership lack skills. Yet, the problem is not the solution. I don't expect anyone here to do anything to make me feel whole. I'm already working on that.
Thirty seconds.
We must speak and continue to speak our uncomfortable truths and produce the data to disrupt the prevailing narrative that is this broken cycle of Boston Public Schools. As the prodigal son of the seventeenth House of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity incorporated, I follow in the footsteps of my brother, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by working at MIT to learn, to leverage AI to help me prioritize my well-being as a radical act of civil disobedience.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, also, I have your laptop. You never sent me this stuff, so I just want to record, I can return it right now. But I also would like my personal belongings back, please. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Falzoi.
My name is Deb Falzoi and I'm testifying on behalf of the Coalition for Accountability and Justice. I am a co-founder of End Workplace Abuse and the co-author of the Workplace Psychological Safety Act, and I am entering into public record a report that summarizes findings from conversations with more than one hundred current and former Central Office managers, principals and co-leaders. This one hundred seventeen-page report describes a racist, sexist and hostile work environment within the Boston Public Schools Central Office. The report exposes that the system is working exactly as it is intended for white supremacy. The report details a work culture rife with low morale and high turnover rates. There has been a forty-one percent churn rate in only one year for the top leaders in the district, costing an estimated annual seven million dollars in tax money to replace employees, and a large increase in the retaliatory tactic of paid administrative leave, or PAL, which increased by nearly one million dollars starting in twenty twenty-one or fifty-seven percent and wasted tax dollars by paying two people for one role. The report describes that a reporter and more than a dozen retired principals and other administrators of color alerted Acting Superintendent Eccleson and incoming superintendent skipper about a twenty twenty-two memo by former BPS employee Charles Grandson.
Thirty seconds.
Describing the increase in the number of black and brown BPS senior administrators out on PAL. The outcry led to an incomplete BPS-funded review of PAL determinations and disciplinary outcomes that resulted in no change to BPS practices or policies. With school buildings crumbling and student achievement at alarming levels, this waste with no accountability for the Central Office of BPS is inexcusable. Parents are losing faith in BPS schools.
Thank you very much.
Students are fleeing.
Your time is up.
It is time for immediate action to regain public trust.
Thank you very much.
And lead with transparency, honesty and integrity. Thank you.
Next speaker is Teresa Pregzer, followed by Nathan Pregzer. Next speaker is Teresa Pregizer, followed by Nathan Pregizer.
My name is... Is this on? Yes. My name is Teresa Pregizer of Roxbury. I have two children at the Boston Latin Academy and one child who received a spot at the West ELC in the fall. My son attended the West ELC, and when it was time to enroll my daughter in the lottery, my husband and I decided to put the West ELC as number two on our list because our son had such a positive experience. Had there been any level of community engagement or communication, we would not have chosen the West ELC for our child only for the school to close one year later. BPS has promised to do better with parent engagement, but in my nine years as a BPS parent, my experience is that parent engagement has only decreased. I enrolled my rising K-two student in the first round of the lottery at a time when she would have had a good chance of getting into a school that was not closing in one year, but BPS chose not to communicate the closure until May, after she had had a seat for over a month, and that choice was taken from us. Days before being informed of the closure, I was in a meeting with Drew Eschgalon, where he was talking about the reason K-zero spots were being thrust upon K-one classrooms. He said it's because BPS had a very large shortage of K-zero spots, and the district needed to do whatever they could to provide more seats. He said the best option for K-zero seats was really early learning centers, and growing or even building new early learning centers is the best long-term option. Hearing this made receiving the news of the West ELC closure more shocking. Why, when BPS says ELCs are the best option for our youngest children, especially the highest-income children,
Thirty seconds.
...are they closing the school? I understand BPS needs to close some schools, but why the West ELC? Shouldn't the closures happen when it's absolutely necessary? They're saying no major renovations are going to happen to the Hennequin, and the identified cost savings, the teacher, the ratio of children to teachers is going to be more children to teachers. The fact that sharing a building with the Hennequin isn't asset, and it's, they have a lot of...
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Nathan Pregizer.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Nathan Pregizer. I live in Roxbury, and I'm currently finishing up my freshman year at Boston, Boston Latin Academy, excuse me. I attended the West Early Learning Center in 2015 through 2016 for first grade. I came to the West ELC after going to the Higgins and Lewis. For a month in my short time at the Higgins and Lewis, I had a pretty bad experience with the school. School felt really big to me. The kids were pretty rough, and the teacher yelled a lot. So I left the Higgins and Lewis because I wasn't learning a lot, and I wasn't having much fun either. So my start to education in Boston Public Schools was off to a poor start. But when I came to the West ELC, I had a better experience. The school was a lot more comfortable. Classroom was calm. There were three teachers in my classroom. I learned a lot, and I had a ton of fun. So once I started going to the West ELC, I experienced a strong sense of community there. My teachers cared for every student and had the time to help each student, and the students were friendly to each other, and the students even seemed to have a community with other teachers and staff in the school, which was pretty cool because the school is tight and close together. So being surrounded by such a strong community gave me a better impression of public education, and I was more motivated to do my best in school because everyone cared and helped me to do my best, so...
Thirty seconds.
I was ready for when I went to my next school, the Nathan Hale School in Fort Hill. My first year there was rough because I, my teacher left after about two months, but so I had substitutes. Despite that, did my best, finished with good grades. Following years, was blessed with good teachers and continued to try hard. Now, finishing freshman year, summa cum laude. So please don't close the West ELC because
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Herman.
Good evening. My name is Erica Herman. It is a superintendent's ethical and legal responsibility to fulfill her duties with honesty and integrity while protecting civil and human rights of all individuals. This committee is responsible for supervising and evaluating the superintendent. I implore you to demand she call off the attacks on me personally and professionally. I am no longer employed by BPS, yet the attacks keep coming. This administration continues to widely spread defamatory remarks, even going so far as to call parents, intimidating them not to speak on my behalf. The fishing expedition continued, sending a legal demand letter to our foundation, threatening a longstanding board member and a funder to this district. And now, a cease and desist letter from Labor Relations because I have yet to update my LinkedIn profile? I no longer work to indicate I no longer work in BPS. I sincerely hope our legal team has larger problems and priorities focused on students and families and not spending valuable time monitoring former employees' social media posts. I have already been disposed of by this administration, and I'm having to fight to receive my correct wages and even collect my personal belongings. The superintendent ignored the law, bypassed her own circulars, violated my due process rights,
Thirty seconds.
...defamed my character with lies, and ignored my claims to the Office of Equity. If this administration was really worried about FERPA violation, they would notify the employee whose confidential personnel record was erroneously included in mine, violating her right to privacy in circular HRS PPO six. If this administration cared about confidentiality, the Chief of Staff would not have read, allowed a confidential investigative report at a family council meeting. If Superintendent Skipper herself cared about employees' rights,
Thank you very much.
...she would not have shared such a defamatory letter to families, to the Boston Globe, and a direct violation of my rights.
Thank you.
Silent speaks. Thank you.
Our next group of speakers are Nicola Sa Lopez, Rose Perez, Charlie Titus, Lauren Lafferty, and Lauren O'Malley Singh. Nicola Sa Lopez?
Good evening. The Boston Public Schools Central Office is failing our children, silencing our families, abusing the employees. The public has pleaded, screamed, reported, petitioned, rallied, and protested to our committee, Mayor Wood, and Superintendent Skipper. We all have been ignored and silenced. When I feel unheard and I just stopped speaking, hashtag silent speak.
Thirty seconds. Thank you, Ms. Perez, Ms. Lopez, your time is up. Next speaker is Rose Perez.
Good evening, School Committee and Superintendent. My name is Rose Perez, and I live in West Roxbury. I'm also a bilingual BPS school psychologist. I work at the William Monroe Trotter and Nathan Hale Elementary Schools. I'm giving testimony today because I'm alarmed that the district is cutting seven school psychology positions. There already aren't enough mental health providers to support the students' current needs. There are students at my schools who struggle to stay seated, may throw chairs, or have other behaviors that make it difficult to learn. They will get there with high levels of support. However, cuts of school psychology positions take away some of this support. On the other side of the spectrum, there are students who may just show signs of being at risk for various mental health disorders. Studies show that we can prevent the later onset of depression, anxiety, alcoholism, and drug use with early intervention. However, without enough staff, these students fall through the cracks. All students need to feel safe and supported in order to learn. Every student deserves access to a mental health provider who has a manageable caseload so they can focus on students' well-being. Every student referred for special education for struggling in school deserves a comprehensive evaluation so their team can understand their needs. This takes about twelve hours. Every school deserves a Tier One Climate Team or Comprehensive Behavioral Mental Health Team to improve the experience of all the community members of a school, children,
Thirty seconds.
...teachers, and families. These teams are also excellent venues to address inequities. School psychologists are vital members or often lead these teams, such as myself, because of their particular training to improve systems and school climate. We need to add more positions to continue to make positive change for students, and to take away school psychology positions would be going backwards. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charlie Titus.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, Distinguished Committee Members. I am here. My name is Charlie Titus. I am a product of the Boston Public School System and a proud graduate of Boston Technical High School, now John D. O'Brien High School. I'm here on behalf of the renaming of the Burke School in favor of the Dr. Holland School. I think that you've heard enough over the last several months, and it seems to me that a compelling case has been made. I don't want to rehash all that's already been said. So I want to tell you three things I think you should know about Dr. Holland, and then I want to try to quickly run through a chronological list of his employment in the school department so that you have that context. So let me just say, Dr. Holland, a man of high character, a man of his word, and possesses unshakable integrity, absolutely unshakable. He's committed to community building, particularly through youth development and service to others. He has great family values and practices those values every day within his immediate family, his vast extended family, and in his workplace. So Al came into the school system in nineteen-seventy-five. Marion Fay, he brought him in. She was the superintendent. He was an ombudsman and special advisor to the superintendent.
Thirty seconds.
During school to sick, already, huh? All right, so I'm not going to get to the chronological. I'll submit it, but let me just say this. Why Al? He's a person from our community who they can, who you can build a historic course content on leadership mentoring, student engagement, and why a school is named after a guy who used to live in that neighborhood. It's an opportunity for this school committee and the superintendent to do that within our community and to have...
Your time is up. Please send, you can either give it to me, and I will send it to the member, so you can send it to me by email.
Yeah, Charlie, just submit the comments.
Yeah.
But that's, yes, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm a coach. I have never done any speaking.
It's all good. You did well. You did great.
All right, thank you.
You did great.
Thank you very much. Next group of speakers are Lauren, oh, no, Lauren Lafferty.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Lafferty, and I was a Boston Public School employee for the last for sixteen years. Garner Pilot Academy was my intern site while I received my master's degree at Harvard. I had stayed there because the school vision and commitment to Community Hub restored my faith in public education. I'm deeply saddened that my time at GPA came to such an abrupt and abrasive ending with absolutely no warning or clear reason. We were being praised at public speaking engagements by the superintendent this fall, and then suddenly, our leadership was under attack, including my position. Using our staffing autonomy, I worked a hybrid schedule like that of over four hundred Central Office managerial leaders, including the superintendent. However, after nearly nine years of a hybrid work schedule, that schedule was abruptly changed with no opportunity to engage in a dialogue about why this would be detrimental to our hub school model. The stress of this shift, both physically and emotionally, required me to go on FMLA, resulted in a surgery as well as mental health implications. I made attempts to speak with the superintendent, had numerous conversations with the Office of Human Capital, and made formal requests to the Office of Equity with adequate physician documentation, which were denied against medical advice. Superintendent Skipper told our governing board, "There is no exception to allowing school-based employees to work a flexible work schedule." However, there are many examples in which
Thirty seconds.
...schools staff have been afforded the opportunity to work a flexible schedule. It is quite astounding the superintendent used my flexible work arrangement, schedule as a reason why my principal was terminated from her position. It is with great dismay that this committee remains complicit to Superintendent Skipper's behavior and does not hold her accountable for leading with integrity and honesty. The students and families of Boston deserve much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lauren O'Malley Singh. Ms. O'Malley Singh, no? Then we continue with the next group of speakers. Minyard Culpepper, David Lewis, Kathy Brucker, Abdi Ali, and Delaney Peña. Minyard Culpepper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Reverend Minyard Culpepper. I thank you, Superintendent, and to the school committee. I come excited about supporting the name change to Dr. Abby Holland. There's been a lot of discussion about Al's work at the Burke and other schools, but I want to take my two minutes to talk about Al's work during busing. Al was at South Boston High School. I was a student at English High School. We all went to the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club, where Al Holland, Peter Parham, Ronald Grant, and others were our mentors. I'm not sure how we would have fared without the mentoring of Al Holland during busing. The trauma, I mean, we all feel the trauma. We'll never get through it in a way that there won't be activation points based on what happens in Boston. But I think naming Al Holland the principal of the Jeremiah Burke takes us a long way into making some amends for what happened to Boston. I think Martin Luther King said it right when he said, "The time is always right to do what is right." I think this is a time to make some amends, to do what is right, to show the city of Boston that during busing, some of the most difficult
Thirty seconds.
...days in this city, that during busing, we now can look back at it, and we can do what is right, and begin to make some amends so that the young folks that are now in the city of Boston can look back on the history and see that we are working now to begin to write the history that was so cruel and mean to us. I'm not sure if I would have went to law school without Al. I'm not sure if I would have went to Howard Divinity School
Your time is up.
...without Al Holland. I'm not sure if I would have went to Brandeis University without Al Holland. We need the school's name
Thank you very much.
...to become the Dr. Al Holland. So when we ride down Washington Street, we can all smile and look back at history in a glamorous way. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is David Lewis. Followed by Kathy Brucker.
Sorry, yeah, Kathy Brucker's going to go first, please? That's okay?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Brucker, ESL teacher, BTU rep, and governing board member at BCLA McCormick, seven-to-twelve pilot school, now named Ruth Babson Academy. First, I'd like to start by thanking the school committee and capital planning for listening to us this year and putting us on the priority list for a facility upgrade with BPS in the city of Boston. I'm here this evening, though, to highlight our ongoing concerns about our current facilities and to request that BPS pledge that it will maintain and to request that BPS pledge that it will maintain our current budget for next year regardless of possible changes to our enrollment. Last year, we submitted a facilities vision that, among many needs, identified and asked for five more classrooms and an office space to accommodate our incoming students and our Hyde Park staff. We were told we could use rooms at the Dever. At the end of April 2024, our school leader was alerted to the fact that we couldn't have the number of rooms we asked for, and negotiations started again. Since then, we have had to try to advocate for a solution that does not involve our adolescent students using spaces that were designed for kindergartners. Even if we're able to get more usable classroom spaces at the Dever, this plan is still short-sighted and inadequate. Until our building is fully renovated, projected to be five years, all of our incoming seventh graders will be separated from our community, and as our youngest students, will have to negotiate moving between two buildings for lunch, specialty classes, and resource room time.
Thirty seconds.
These same students will be separated from their counselors, social worker, and mental health clinicians, and this plan requires dedicated staff to support them in the Dever and to move from building to building. We're concerned that the inadequacy of our facilities will lead to a decrease in student enrollment as families see these conditions and decide to send their children elsewhere. Our request is that BPS guarantees that it will maintain our current budget so that we can continue our mission to provide a high-quality education-
Thank you.
...and without the threat of having to cut positions. Thank you. I'll email your testimony.
Good evening, school committee. Thank you for giving our school an audience and for your continued support of Ruth Batson Academy. My name is David Lewis, and I'm a school counselor and a member of the governing board and a Dorchester resident. I want to highlight some of the facilities' needs that our governing board laid out over a year ago that are still unmet and our quality of life issues for our students and staff. Here are some examples. Bathrooms: Students and staff do not have adequate bathrooms. Student bathrooms are in poor condition. Staff have only one single-use bathroom per floor for a staff of over 100. The plumbing in our defunct locker room could create additional staff bathrooms, but BPS has no plans to renovate these spaces anytime soon. Water: We're still relying on deliveries of bottled water despite requesting new water fountains, such as those installed in other schools in 2021. The five-gallon jugs are less healthy for our students and worse for the environment. Gym: Our gym needs a full renovation. As it stands now, we cannot host games for a volleyball team despite having enough players to field a team. Even some basic aesthetic upgrades would be a start. For years, we've had the same broken-down planters greeting students and staff. I brought some pictures, which I've shared with Ms. Parvix to share with you. I was one of the members of the governing board that voted to change our name to Ruth Batson Academy. I love what Ruth Batson represents, the fight for educational justice for students in Boston. However, it's embarrassing to see Ruth Batson's name affixed to a school building with these conditions. It feels inauthentic, or worse, hypocritical. Chair and vice chair and Dr. Atkins have visited our school and witnessed these conditions, and I know you're working with the school district on behalf of our community, but we're asking for action now. What we're asking for is that BPS address the 15 of our 24 requests from last April and that BPS facilities and capital management set up a meeting with our governing board by September 2024 to go over these requests. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker is Abdi Ali.
Good evening, Chair Robinson, school committee members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Abdi Mohammed Ali. I'm the son of the late Dr. Michael E. Haines, who for almost eight decades served the city of Boston, its families, and children. I'm a lifelong resident of Roxbury. My two children attended the Rafael Hernandez. I'm also the founder, at one point, of Boston Arts Academy, faculty founder, worked in the Boston Public Schools for almost three decades until my departure in 2022. I'm also the executive director of Right Boston, which has served the Boston Public Schools for 25 years. I'm here in support of the renaming of the Jeremiah E. Burke High School as the Dr. Albert D. Holland School of Technology. In 1993, and this is very personal to me, Dr. Holland recruited me as a teacher for the Boston Public Schools. And for the next three decades, Dr. Holland mentored, supported, coached, advised. He has been my standard bearer, my anchor in this profession. He has been doing the same for many school leaders and educators in the Boston Public Schools for 50 years, working to coach and mentor new school leaders.
Thirty seconds.
In 1982, after seven years championing the desegregation of the Boston Public Schools, Dr. Holland was appointed the headmaster of the Jeremiah Burke High School and elevated its national profile. Dr. Holland is an astounding, outstanding educator, role model. He deserves it. He's earned to have the school renamed for him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Delaney Peña. Delaney Peña? If Delaney Peña is not here, we will now transition to virtual testimonies. Please make sure you sign into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Our next group of speakers is Tanya Woodward, Linda Parker, John Mudd, and Mike Heischman. Tanya Woodward? Please accept the prompt. You can start.
I can start?
Yes. Could you please turn on your video? Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening. It is with a heart of joy and an unwavering spirit, oh, I'm Tanya Woodward, the principal of the Hennigan School in Jamaica Plain. It is with a heart of joy and an unwavering spirit that I speak before you tonight as the proud leader of the Hennigan School. Throughout my tenure at the school spanning over 22 years, I have worked diligently towards establishing our school as a beacon of educational excellence, where we celebrate our scholars, collaborate with families, and remain responsive to the needs of our community. My school's dedication to these principles allows us to cultivate a nurturing environment where every child can thrive. At our school, we are dedicated to shaping the leaders of the future, nurturing compassionate and enlightened scholars who show the strength and determination to rise above any barriers they encounter. We celebrate our scholars' successes, accompany them on their journeys, and join hands with our families to ensure that their child is surrounded with love and with the resources they need. I am filled with excitement as I express my support for this incredible opportunity to expand our vision. We are poised to welcome another school community that mirrors our firm commitment to the growth and success of our scholars and families. In coming together, we can forge an even stronger educational setting where our unified efforts-
Thirty seconds.
...will yield extraordinary futures for future scholars. Together, we can construct a harmonious school environment that not only upholds our shared devotion to excellence, but also embraces the rich diversity and strengths of our combined communities. We look forward to working with the staff, scholars, and families of the West Zone ELC, working side by side to ensure a seamless transition and radiant future for all. I thank you for your support and dedication to our mission. As we embark on this new journey, I am confident that united in purpose and heart-
Thank you very much.
...greatness for our scholarship community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Parker.
Hi, my name is Linda Parker. I am a Jeremiah Burke alumni, class of 1988, and a former Boston Public School teacher. I also reside in Dorchester. I stand before you in support of renaming the Jeremiah Burke High School to Dr. Albert D. Holland High School. Mr. Holland goes above and beyond the call of duty to help people. I have been knowing him since I was a freshman in high school, and Mr. Holland is still my mentor, and he supports me whenever I need. Every time I call him, he answers. I can't remember one time he told me no or didn't figure out a way to make my situation better. He doesn't just do it for me, he does it for many people. He may, it makes a difference in so many people's lives. Mr. Holland is loved by so many people. Let's show him that we appreciate all he has done while he is still living. Renaming the Jeremiah Burke to Dr. Albert D. Holland is the least we can do to honor him. So I stand before you in support of changing the name of the school.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is John Mudd.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a longtime resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. We have heard from the district that there are not more substantial facilities proposals because they first need to develop more trust with the community, and that the way the district can develop trust is by implementing proposals well. This is fundamentally misguided. It is the wrong way to develop trust. Many of us have said many times that the way to build trust is to engage the community in the development of plans for their schools, not just in their implementation. Treat parents and stakeholders as adults, as respected partners in planning, not as children who need to be told what is best for them. After the mess that was created in springing the plan for the O'Brien on the community without warning, after the upset and opposition you will no doubt hear tonight from the West Zone Early Learning Center parents who were given only a few days' warning about the closing of their schools, why can't you learn? Why do you have to keep repeating these mistakes? It is clearly not a winning strategy. You are losing both in not facing up to the need for a master facilities plan and in not building a foundation of trust to move forward. It's a mystery why BPS would continue in this way.
Thirty seconds.
If people haven't actually experienced what genuine community engagement is, there are many of us who would be willing to try to help you understand. Can BPS accept help of this kind? You now have the time to delay action this year and transform your approach for next year. Will you meet this opportunity and challenge? Thank you for hearing my views.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mudd. Next speaker is Mike Heischman.
Mike Heischman, Dorchester. I testify this evening as an individual and not as a member of any organization. Silence Speaks: 100+ Voices Beyond the Trauma is a report written by many past and present BPS educational leaders. It is being released to the school committee and the public at tonight's meeting. Recently, I have received a draft copy of this long report and confess that I've read and digested less than half of this compelling story. It is a story that began a long time ago. Education schooling has long been an arena of struggle between those who use force and control in the service of the power structure versus those who aspire to educate and liberate in order to create a more just world. It's my conviction that an essential part of the mission of our educational leaders is to fight for the best interest of all of our children. Being that kind of leader is a challenge. I do not believe that the authors of this report have performed their duties perfectly. They are all human. They all have weaknesses. They all make mistakes, and if justified, they should be held accountable. Unto the misleadership of our current superintendents, I believe that the Hamdun's educational justice leaders has significantly escalated. The authors believe that the major reason for the retaliation and-
Thirty seconds.
...them is because they have dared to speak out against the top BSC leadership. I am testifying this evening because I believe this is the truth. I am proud to stand in solidarity with the authors. It demands further investigations and actions to remedy the harm that has been done. Mayor Wu, what are you going to do about this report? The school committee, what are you going to do about this report? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heischman. Next group of speakers are Ruby Reyes, Cheryl Buckman, Maura Smith, Melissa Jones, and Agustina Moron. Ruby Reyes?
My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Since 2018, the Build BPS and Green New Deal Stakeholders Coalition has demanded that BPS create a system-wide, long-term facilities plan, complete with specific building plans, implementing the Racial Equity Planning Tool with fidelity to determine if plans are equitable by race, socioeconomic status, neighborhood, disability, and linguistic groups, and share the tools and analysis publicly and release a financial report and an educational plan regarding programs, grade reconfigurations, extended learning time, and student assignment. The group adds that prior to merging or closing of a school, BPS must have a new, modern facility ready for students in the affected school. The process has not adhered to the community engagement outlined in the Racial Equity Planning Tool thus far. The tool asks the key questions. How have Black Latinx EL Special Ed and economically disadvantaged students, families, and staff and other internal and external stakeholders been engaged in considering and shaping the proposal? Is the plan realistic and adequately resourced? The answer to these questions is no. Stakeholders have not been engaged in considering or shaping the proposals that have come forward. They were decisions that were already made and are being pushed upon them, and we know the plans are not realistic or adequately resourced because there's a list of schools whose promised renovations and new buildings haven't been completed yet. With the McKinley and Blackstone, their promised renovations have virtually disappeared from progress. The West Zone Learning Center community does not want to close, nor should they have to. They are one of the very few early learning centers in BPS. Mayor Wu's campaign promises a commitment to early education, so why close a desperately needed early learning center with a newly hired principal? Why put a yet another school community through more trauma without being thoughtful?
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker is Cheryl Buckman. Cheryl Buckman, please accept the prompt. So we will, Cheryl Buckman is not accepting the prompt. We will continue with Maura Smith, and we can come back to you. Maura Smith?
Hi, my name is Maura Smith. I'm a parent to three children at or entering West Zone Early Learning Center, and I'm speaking today about the proposal to close it. I'm urging the school committee to vote no. Passing it would create a dangerous precedent that the district can take, can make top-down decisions about school closures and the future of our children's education without proper justification or any direct community engagement. My family already endured one disastrous and deeply traumatic school closure at Mission Hill. This experience feels eerily similar. Once again, the district is acting without any dialogue with the community directly impacted by its decision. Once again, a huge, life-altering decision. Once again, a huge, life-altering decision. I watched you speak yesterday on On the Record. When asked whether you were abandoning a previous BPS strategy of, quote, "top-down decisions," where BPS, quote, "goes ahead and closes a school without actually checking in with communities," oh, sorry, families about what they want, unquote, I heard you commit to working with and fully engaging the community at every step of the way. But you have not done that. You decided to close our beloved school despite the fact that it is meeting all of BPS's own benchmarks for enrollment and achievement without talking to us. You haven't been able to explain why such a thriving, successful school was targeted for closure. We are asking you to do precisely what you said yesterday should be done. We're asking you to recognize that the process matters as much, if not more, than the outcome. Along with over 100-
Thirty seconds.
-parents and caregivers from our small West Zone community who signed a petition paper last week, and hundreds of Boston residents who signed our online petition, we are asking you for a voice in this decision. Please vote no and give us the chance to collaborate on preserving and replicating the things that make West Zone so special, things that we believe should be modeled throughout BPS: a dedicated early education focus with low student-teacher ratios, free surround care, which every school should have, and a high-quality curriculum that includes dance, physical education, music, and storytelling.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Your time is up. Thank you.
I ask you to vote no.
Next speaker is Melissa Jones.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is Melissa Jones, and I'm a first-grade SCI teacher at the James W. Henningan School. I've been a part of the Henningan community since September 1999, first as an AmeriCorps member and now as an early childhood teacher for the last 22 years. I feel very fortunate to have been a part of this diverse and multilingual community. I am here to speak in support of expanding the Henningan community to K-0 to 6th grade. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and members of the Henningan K-2 team that could not be here tonight. First, we'd like the members of the ELC community to know that we empathize with the families, students, and staff impacted by the potential closure of the West Zone ELC, but we are excited for the opportunity that this presents for the scholars in both communities, and we look forward to working closely together with all involved as the transition potentially happens. I've spoken with some of our families who have young children, and they are excited by the opportunity to have their child in one seat from K-0 to 6th grade with minimizing interruptions. We are excited to enhance the connection between our staff and the ELC. With existing relationships spanning both schools, professional collaboration will enable us to more effectively support our students during the expansion of classrooms across all grade levels. The Henningan community is also working through our own loss of family, students, and staff members as our 7th and 8th grade community transitions to other schools, but we really want to focus on the positive impact for scholars and families that will be provided by expanding access to increase K-0, K-1 seats-
Thirty seconds.
... and providing families and students a continuum of educational services and to remain in our school from K-0 to grade 6. We are also excited about becoming a hub community school where we will be able to offer wraparound services for families in need. We think this is a great opportunity for the Jamaica Plain, Roxbury, and Dorchester communities. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak for myself and the Henningan Early Childhood Team.
Thank you very much. We're going to try Cheryl Buckman again.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a 5th grader at the Dever in Dorchester. I'm also a member of AMKOSA, long-life resident of South Boston. I'm here because I'm deeply invested in the well-being of our students and their right to a high-quality education. My son's school is expected to lose 10% of its educators in an SEI program. Plus, the Dever was promised a new play area for the students to play in, and it yet has fallen to the wayside. Do the parents of the Dever even have a say in what happens in their community? Or does the school committee already make that decision for us? BPS, you should be investing in our children's future by adding more educators that have one license to teach, programs like inclusion done right, mental health services, fully-staffed libraries, equal pay for our educators. Without these proper components, how do our children spread their wings to learn? This is a major insult. After all, our educators have been our community's backbone during and after a historic pandemic. Having our educators and children suffered enough, by eliminating our educators, who will be there to teach our children? Taking the programs that helped our children thrive isn't the answer as well.
Thirty seconds.
Hasn't schools, hasn't schools like the Dever suffered enough? I come to you as a parent tonight to please reconsider the choices you are making because the wrong one will impact our children for many years to come. I also urge the school committee to vote no on closing the West Zone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last speaker for this first hour is Agustina Moron.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Agustina Moron, and I'm a resident of Jamaica Plain. I am a parent of a student at West Zone Early Learning Center. Over the past days, our incredible community has voiced our strong opposition with compelling reasons that underscore why our school should remain open. Why close West Zone Early Learning Center, a high-achieving school that provides high-quality seats and surround care to Boston working families? West Zone Early Learning Center focuses on early childhood education. Its dedicated specialists, educators, trained staff, and enriching educational programs make it a model that should be replicated and not closed. The decision to close our school did not include the voices and needs of our community. Moreover, the proposal lacks a concrete plan, and the only aspect we are aware of is this one-year transition period, which is a very concerning, a concerning aspect of the plan to me, because educators during that year and families, everyone should be expected to work and show up without knowing what the future holds for everyone after the closure. I urge you to vote no on the closure of West Zone Early Learning Center. Instead, keep it open and replicate its excellent model to expand the city's early education programs, which are greatly needed. I ask you to allocate resources to support young learners, ensuring they receive the necessary foundation to thrive and contribute to a vibrant future for Boston. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Chair, that concludes our first hour of speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and thanks you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our second action item this evening is the approval of interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. You will recall that Chief Financial Officer David Bloom presented this recommendation to the committee at our June 5th meeting. I'll now invite the superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing additional. CFO Bloom is here, but this is really our pro forma for our ability to be able to continue to approve grants and funding continuation throughout the summer. But CFO Bloom is here as well.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan Hernandez. Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our third action item this evening is the renaming proposal of the Jeremiah E Burke High School to the Dr. Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we're also asking for a vote affirmative to approve changing the name of the Jeremiah E Burke High School to the Dr. Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. I think, as you heard last week from school leader Emile Carr Silva and school administrator Greg Hill, this proposal follows a robust public process. You've also heard from so many supporters, myself included, who spoke to Dr. Holland's distinguished career at BPS, his leadership of the Burke, and his many contributions to the district, which continue today. Dr. Holland is a lifelong Boston resident and a retired BPS administrator who spent 50 years working in our schools, serving as the head of school at the Burke. A former BPS student and student athlete, Dr. Holland also served in district leadership positions, including BPS High School Superintendent. He's been recognized and published for his many accomplishments in the community and field of education. Since his retirement in 2008, Dr. Holland has continued to support the work of our district by coming out of retirement and supporting in different schools. Dr. Holland is currently still giving back to BPS by mentoring and coaching new district school leaders every day. For so many reasons, this is the right decision, and I would ask you to vote in favor of this proposal.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee.
I'll just quickly say, it was really heartening to hear from so many people about Dr. Holland and from all the love and support he's given this district. As I said last, in our last meeting, I think of him as our firefighter because we have called him so many times when we've had problems, and I'm not really sure if the word "no" is in Dr. Holland's vocabulary unless someone says, "Dr. Holland, have you done enough?" And so I think the world of him, and I fully support this. I do make two requests. One is, superintendent, we have to make sure that we fill the second part of this when we say "school of technology." That means curriculum, that means staffing, that means partnerships, that means hardware and software, internships for our students in technology, you know, career pathways. We owe it to Dr. Holland to have the second piece of that be at the level that he deserves. And second, as I mentioned last week, and it really brought it home when Ms. Lima Barbosa and I were out at Burke for the graduation and talking to some folks there, it's, you know, the way to bridge that gap for folks who graduate from Burke and may not know Dr. Holland, but there's a lot of Burke pride. And I don't know if it's naming a Burke alumni room or something like that, but learning from Tech Boston in the past that, you know, became O'Briant, rightfully so, just allowing a bridge for Burke alum to still feel a connection to the school even with a different name. And many of them will be excited to learn about Dr. Holland and why we're naming it. But I just think it's important we do that out of respect for the Burke alum, that feel that pride of school that you feel the second you walk in that building. So those are the two requests I make.
Thank you. Second those requests. Anyone else? I will now entertain a motion to approve the name Dr. Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan Hernandez. Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia. Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you to all of those who testified. Our last, our last action item this evening is the closure proposals for the school year 25-26, the closures of the Lila Frederick Middle School and the West Zone Early Learning Center. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we're here to ask for approval of several measures that are an important part of our long-term facilities planning. We're asking specifically the committee to vote to approve two things: the closure of the West Zone Early Learning Center and its consolidation into the Henningan School, and the closure of the Frederick Pilot Middle School, the district's last standalone middle school. First, I'd like to thank the school communities, the school leaders, staff, students, and families. We recognize that closures are not easy, but the work we're doing is important for the entire district's ecosystem and future generations of students. And as we continue to move forward with our capital planning efforts, closures will be part of our long-term work, but we need to continue to invest in our schools in both high-quality instruction and facilities so all students have access to great schools. To make significant and impactful generational change, the entire district must move in the same direction. We're doing that work now. We are aligning our entire system across departments and schools to do this work and ensure that all students have access to the education and support needed to fully engage and succeed. The vision is supported by three pillars: creating and improving academic and enrichment programs, for example, our implementation of inclusive education and equitable literacy, which we presented back on June 5th, expanding bilingual education, SLIF and newcomer programming, and strengthening the secondary school ecosystem. Secondly, structural change, like the strategic expansion of high-quality seats, minimizing student transitions, and increasing access to strong school choices for all students by rethinking student assignment and special education policies. And lastly, investing in our facilities through new builds, renovations, and closures, mergers, and consolidations like the ones you are voting on tonight. While we are not closing any secondary schools this year, we are laying the foundation to get all of our high school students into high-quality seats. Yes, closures are one strategy, but we will use an entire toolkit of strategies to get our students what they need. We are a committed team and city dedicated to doing the work alongside the community to move us forward. The vote you are being asked to take on the Frederick Middle School and the West Zone ELC are not happening in isolation. We have made unprecedented investments in creating facilities equipped to support the high-quality student experience, more than in the past 40 years combined, and we are making clear transition pathways district-wide with grade reconfigurations. We are listening closely and addressing community concerns as we go. We are striving to get better with each step. This is long-term work. We are dedicated to getting it right and continuing to improve the process. The Frederick closure was first announced on January 10th of 2024 as part of the BPS phase-out of middle schools, but has not formally been approved. The Frederick is the last freestanding middle school to close following the district's implementation of a 2019 policy to shift to a district ride pre-K-6, 7-12, and pre-K-8, 9-12 grade configuration. This creates fewer transitions and clear pathways, thereby eliminating traditional middle schools. The current state of the West Zone ELC in Henningan is that they share a school building and are squeezed tightly into it. There are a total of two planned K-0, K-1 classrooms for 24-25 school year between the two schools. Staff at both schools currently lack adequate instructional space. You can regularly see teachers delivering courses on carts. The proposed future state through this proposal adds four classrooms in K-0, K-1, including new substantially separate classrooms. We'll determine the specific substantially separate programming in the years to come in partnership with the school communities. We know that there's a need in the area to serve more early learners with disabilities. This proposal helps us to meet that need. Central office teams will collaborate with school leaders and school communities to determine future sustainability of separate programming, sorry, future substantially separate programming, and prioritize vacated space from the eliminated 7th and 8th grades for specialists, itinerants, and family-centered spaces to get teachers off carts and into instructional spaces. This proposal allows the district to meet key priorities to expand access to the high-quality student experience by expanding early childhood seats, particularly for students with disabilities, by providing additional opportunities for inclusion and partial inclusion settings, by ensuring strong academic programming for SLIF students, by maximizing our physical footprint to provide more flexible spaces for instruction, planning, resource rooms, and family centers. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the engagement with the West Zone ELC, Henningan, and Frederick communities and explain how we have defined community engagement. First, a thorough community engagement process led to the development of the policies we are using to guide decision-making. Once a proposal is put forward, the first questions we ask are what is the best process to get us to where we're going and how will we engage the community? For example, if it's a grade reconfiguration, community engagement is about ensuring that impacted students and staff are supported to make the transition as smooth as possible. If it's a school closure like the Frederick, community engagement is about working to identify ways to support all who are impacted- identify ways to support all who are impacted, including students, staff, families, and the surrounding community. We have been engaging with the West Zone and Hennequin School communities since early May through public meetings, letters to families, and office hours for the school staff. Capital planning staff were at the building just yesterday. We have allowed the entire twenty-four, twenty-five school year to deepen that engagement and ensure the new community will have everything it needs. Together, we have responded to community concerns and committed to the following relative to the West Zone, ELC, and the Hennequin: guaranteeing every student at the West Zone ELC a spot at the Hennequin; provide free extended-day programming; make facilities improvements at the Hennequin; make the new Hennequin pre-K to six a community hub school model to provide increased support for students and families, expanded learning time, and strategic partnerships in service of increased academic and social-emotional opportunities, all coordinated through community engagement; collaborate on outstanding questions concerning staffing, programming, and operations; keeping the entire building open for learning as the Hennequin pre-K to six school, and committing to ongoing transparent engagement and communications. We will continue to work with the school communities through two work groups launching this fall. We began conversations about the future of the Frederick building with the Frederick Governing Board leadership in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four and met with them most recently on Friday, June fourteenth. We will accelerate and broaden community conversations this spring and summer. BPS is grateful to the Frederick community for being active and thoughtful participants in the planning process and is committed to the following principles that the governing board has elevated: maintaining the name of the Lila G. Frederick, who is a longtime advocate for education and empowerment in Grove Hall and for the school; continue to use the building for community purposes during any potential transition period instead of leaving the building vacant; maintaining access for future generations of students in Grove Hall and the surrounding community; and maintaining the future occupants of the building as a community hub school with partnerships and neighborhood organizations. Hopefully, we've been able to answer and address, I think, in any of these situations, there can be a lot of information that the community receives, sometimes there can be confusion. The team is committed to continuing to meet, to clarify, but most importantly, to reassure in both cases that we will continue to honor the things that we've promised here, that we're saying publicly, and to do that with the community and to do it during the transition year of twenty-four, twenty-five. So Chair, those are my comments. I also know that Chief Stanislaus and her team here, were there to be any specific questions? So I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Dr. Alkins?
So what we, what I'm holding particularly with this is, what are we learning in terms of the timing of engagement? It seems that a lot of the, particularly the comments that we heard here tonight, one, I noticed that there are, have been significantly fewer voices, I think I've heard from the Hennequin side and obviously more from the West Zone side. But it seems that a lot of this has particularly come, it seems that the community feels that they were taken by surprise a little bit on this. And so I'm wondering, what are we learning about when we need to inform families about a potential closure or a potential conversation of consolidation? And yeah, how are we thinking about that?
So Chief Stanislaus, do you want to come up? Just because I want you to be able to speak to, you're doing the deep work with the community engagement part. But what I would say, Dr. Alkins, is like, I think it's, we want to be able to allow the year of transition, which we think is really important, for the actual transition itself. It depends, you know, I think it depends on the grade level and what's happening, whether it's a merger or closure, seventh and eighth consolidation, like it really depends on what it is. But I think what Chief Stanislaus and the team have done is to try to get all the data and the tools out there for the communities to start to use, to be able to look at in the different regions, you know, what kinds of, how do we generate more high-quality seats? In the case of West Zone and Hennequin, this was something that had sort of been brought up, kind of as we're talking with school leaders, school staff, school communities. And I think that we wanted to be able to bring this forward as kind of a together, not one at a time. I think going forward for next year, Chief Stanislaus is going to be working right from the fall on with communities, region by region, to really tease out what those possible closure, mergers could be to be able to increase the high-quality seats. We've done some analysis in the data of, by region, of high-quality seats versus the capacity that we have, and there are some regions where it is very mismatched, very much fewer high-quality seats. So Dell and her team are going to work very hard in each of the regions, but particular focus on the regions where we know we have to make sure that we have solutions that are going to quickly increase high-quality seats. Dell, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Yep. Thank you for that question. Good night, everyone. Dell Stanislaus, capital planning. Just wanted to lean into your question, Dr. Alkins. One, just wanted to hold a second, that like, closing a school community, it's not easy. So I understand that the community is like grappling with the news of closure, so just wanted to hold space for that. In terms of engaging the school communities, while we were doing the work with the long-term facilities plan, there's been, there was a series of engagement through webinars, workshops. We held space for the communities to look at the data, walk the communities through decision-making process, how as a district we'll be making decisions on closures going forward. And one thing that we heard from the community while we were doing these sessions is that before we bring recommendations to school, to the school committee, that school communities wanted to see here about the recommendations before they go to school committee. So that's something that we changed this time around, instead of bringing it to school committee and leaving a period of time to engage the school community. We brought it to the school communities first before we presented it to school committee. I think, as the Superintendent shared, however, I do think there's always space to learn, there's always space as a team for us to improve. And one of the things that we started looking at already is how we kind of just like bring our school leaders along in the process, starting the beginning of next school year, fall, lay out a calendar for the entire school year so that, so that we're bringing our schools along, like a lot earlier in the process. I do think having the operations and the engagement teams for a full year of like transition and working collaboratively and engaging with the school communities, I do think, I've seen like some positive sort of like outcomes with like the Sumner Filbrick through that merger process, and also the Shaw Taylor, as we redesigned what their work groups, sorry, their engagement groups look like, after hearing feedback from the school committee and those school communities. So I think that listening to the community and also taking their feedback and just like readjusting our engagement planning consistently is important.
I also, it was my mistake, Senior Advisor Granger is here too, and please feel free, you should come up as well, because you've been intimate in this process.
No, I mean, I completely see the year of engagement as far as the transition. I'm thinking also, it seems like there's those two phases, right? So you have that year of transition, which I absolutely believe is necessary. And it's also seeming like we're hearing this previous period of engagement where, yeah, like is that decision even worthy of being brought? Like, so I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. The other question I sort of have with this, because I do see the stats for the engagement, I'm counting about thirty-three staff that you all engaged, and you know, I'm looking at about sixty participants between like the sessions that you all, at least what I'm reading in the report. I'm also wondering, are you all sharing sort of this stakeholder analysis, like with the community, like after you've done, you know, the four or five different sessions of community engagement? You know, I'm thinking about some of the comments that we heard, and you know, I'm looking at the racial equity planning tool right now, which you all have been using, like for that. So it'd be, it'd be good for those communities to also see that. It's like, no, we're actually, there is actual use of it. And so I'm wondering how you all are sharing sort of the overall analysis that you are getting after the engagement period?
That's a, that's a good question. I think what we've been doing as a team is getting, so just in terms of like how we share back out with the community, one thing we heard from the community is that they would like us to be really open from gathering questions from like all of the community meetings and like sharing that publicly, so that's something that our team has been doing. But in terms of sort of like additional, like analysis, like breaking down, like the number of like attendees and all of that good stuff, like we've shared it here, however, that's not something that we consistently share out, but like super open to sharing that out more publicly so folks can see the level of engagement and also sharing it with our, with the school communities.
No, 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 that's very, that's very helpful, particularly as like, there's a, there's a narrative, right, that goes along with it, where you're hearing no engagement whatsoever, we haven't heard this. And if you can point to, and you're actually sharing that with them, it's like, not only are we having these meetings, but here, we're giving the results back to you as to what we heard. And of course, individuals are always able to have whatever stance that they have, but I think it's critical for us as we talk about transparency to make sure that we're sharing that stakeholder analysis with them so that we can hear it echoed back that, hey, you know, you're misinterpreting what we, what we're communicating to you, or we're just being transparent to say, yeah, like we've interviewed this many people as well. And I think that would go a long way in just in terms of transparency, as we're talking about community engagement and where people can fall into that process. So, no, thank you for that. I'm just wondering the, what you all have been doing. So, thank you.
I think that's a great point.
Yep. Thank you so much for that feedback.
Ms. Romeo?
I'll just say, sorry, that court's a little far away. I know, it's fine. So Superintendent, what was important was to me, and, and you know, you have two different situations here, right? So the Frederick is keeping with the policy of getting rid of middle schools, but what I heard in particular was the work you've done with the Grove Hall community and the commitments made about the name, using the building for community purposes, having it available as a BPS school in the future for students from that community. I mean, that's listening and working and making commitments, and to me, it makes perfect sense. And with the Hennequin and the West Zone, you know, people hear a school is closing and they think something. And then when you read off the, if you ask parents at the West Zone, what do you like about it? Well, we like the extended time, you know, we like the partnership, so on and so forth. And you walk the building, as you and I have together, it, you know, you're at the West Zone kindergarten classes, and then you're at the Hennequin ones, and then all of a sudden, you're back at the West Zone ones. It's like a mix back and forth. And it just, you know, and having talked to both of the school leaders with you, it makes sense. To me, your commitments are, that you laid out very specifically tonight, are all what everyone likes about the West Zone, right? And it allows the Hennequin to be strengthened, to now be pre-K to six, to have the additional room, to become a hub school, and that is huge for the Hennequin, that the commitment that that whole building will be kept open as the Hennequin. I mean, these are important commitments made, so to me, it gets past the word that people have a reaction to. And when you look at the commitments you've made, I find it encouraging and thoughtful. So I thank you for those commitments.
And, sorry, and sorry, and I think the, and I think the point that I'm getting at about mirroring that back to the community, then like also helps in the conversation for it, and it helps frame, and basically like, you know, community engagement is another form of just active listening, right? And so, but I need to be able to repeat back to you, is this what we're hearing from this community? And then also with the Frederick, you know, thank you to Dr. Granger for digging deeper and finding a little bit more context. And so my understanding is that that particular, the issue with the Frederick goes all the way back to twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and really just thinking about the ability for them to, particularly I think with sub-separate classrooms, I think, was one of the, the, the starting points for that conversation. And then just over the course of changing administrations and things like that, things sort of fall through the cracks. And so I think, you know, as a member of the body, I'm, you know, for me, it's just to understand that a school community went through that, and I know that they're not the only example I think of that, is, you know, I think, you know, from the committee's standpoint, that's, that's something that we can say, that like, we apologize to that school community because it fell through the cracks for as long as it did. But thank you for the continued advocacy for those people who came here on behalf of the Frederick. But I love that, that I do think that, you know, we're going to be able to, for one, definitely keep the name like of it and just the spirit of that school. And so, last thing I wanted to say about that.
The one thing I, I think that we all are learning and will learn with this whole process, that change is difficult, no matter how big or small it is. As an early childhood person and as a person who's been very much engaged over many, many years with the early learning centers, you know, I think they are an amazing model. But I think we've also known for twenty-five or thirty years that they're not something that alone the district can bring to scale. And that over the last several years, particularly as the district has engaged and opened up more and more K zero and K one classrooms, I think an issue that has bothered many of us is understanding the need for surround care for all of our young children, particularly given that the rules are different for five-year-olds than it is for threes and fours, and family needs for, you know, overall surround care. The West Zone, I believe, is the only school that is a school within a school. And there is an early childhood, there are already early childhood classrooms, but it felt like they were two different worlds. As difficult as this is for the West Zone, I'm happy that there is a year, because I feel like we can learn a lot in that year and not only advocate within BPS, but look in partnership with the city, with the, you know, to look at the needs of families. I've talked to families in many of the early childhood, and the ELCs who've all said they feel like they've won the lottery when they've gotten a seat in the ELC because it's a program that guarantees them surround care. And for many, many, many of our families, it's a lifesaver because of the high cost of childcare. So I feel like it's not something that we can ignore at all, irregardless of who the families are in a program. This has been a very special program, and I wish with all my heart that we could make this universal because every single family of a young child needs this. But I am hoping that we can seriously take this next year to work with families and to work with our early childhood division period to look at this need and to look at it with the city and others to make sure that we are trying to create a more equitable opportunity around these opportunities for our young kids.
Thank you. Just a little chime in. I hear you, I understand that change is hard, but in my view, change is, if changes are done for the better, I support that one hundred percent. I also hear Dr. Alkins' concern regarding community involvement. However, so far, what we have heard, I'd be very frank, a lot of information that, or a lot of public testimony that were presented to us. that were presented to us, I believe come from alternative facts. I don't believe it's true facts. I think it's alternative facts. Whether, whether those facts were deliberate or, or because of the society, the way it is, I, I don't accept them. I, I do under- I do understand that, you know, the, 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 the community should be, you know, stakeholder. But if, if you come here and you provide me with alternative facts, don't expect me to hear you. So that's how I, I take it. And again, in my view, it's not, it's not a closure. We, we play, we're playing with words. It's not a closure. It's a consolidation. But a consolidation for better assessment, so be it. So I'm with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. If there's no further discussion, I will now entertain a motion to approve the proposal as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to reports. Tonight, we have just one presentation. I'm delighted to welcome Diego Maida, our student representative, to provide a brief update on the Boston Student Advisory Council. I must also note that this occasion also marks Mr. Maida's final BSAC meeting. We also want to congratulate Mr. Maida for receiving the Marion L. Hurd Scholarship at the United Way of Mass Bay. Congratulations, Mr. Maida. We're very proud of you. And I won't explain to people what that is. One of the issues, as we all know, is our school committee member does not receive the stipend for being this. And it was actually, and one of our school committee members that worked with the, the United Way to provide a scholarship for our student. And actually, the scholarship is much more than what the year-long stipend would have been. So Mr. Maida is going to receive over four years. Am I correct? It's $14,000. So it's $3,500 a year.
Oh.
Well deserved. Very proud of you. So before Mr. Maida starts, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
I mean, I, we're just very proud of you, Diego. I think, you know, knowing how much time you have to take to come to our meetings, and, and you participate, you ask questions, you know, you have a sincere interest, and you always voice for students, not just yourself, but for the students you represent, which is what BSAC is all about. So you've, you've really been a great representative. And I've learned a lot from you from the kinds of questions that you ask. And I know that when you go on to Northeastern, you're just going to do a great job. Who knows? Maybe you'll be back in the BPS at some point.
Thank you. So, let me pull up. All right. So our academic year programming focused on four student-led initiatives and continued professional development, including educational equity, mental health, adultism, and anti-racism within BPS, and gain leadership development internally and externally through BPS partnerships. So our academic year highlights, 42 students were enrolled in academic year programming from the 20th of December, of November to May 16th. BSAC students formed affinity spaces to promote community and inclusive within council, found LGBTQ and brothers at BSAC. Students participated in financial literacy workshops, restorative justice workshops, and career development projects with many different people and members coming in. Students created BSAC project, passion projects for the first time, which are individual research projects and short slideshow demonstrations that highlighted personal experiences and areas of growth that BPS could have. These ranged from mental, from creating mental health spaces to trying to, to trying to abolish MCAS, collaborating with over 20 organizations, partnerships with internal stakeholders. So in the summer, we're going to have a six-week-long program running from July 1st to August 9th. 30 students are set to enroll in community building, community service, leadership development, and student-based curriculum. These, the subcommittees will be continued and projects with community building internally and externally from BPS. These are our, so just also some, the adultism subcommittee completed a professional development workshop and video skip to, to go along with it. The mental health subcommittee did presentations on the effects of mental health and why more resources need to be provided to schools regarding mental health and their own solutions for that. The education equity subcommittee made a video of a day in the life at certain schools and a presentation regarding inequities in schools that we attend. And the anti-racism subcommittee created an anti-racism workshop and a position paper about current events. These are some highlights. We had around 275 members from our showcase that happened on May 9th, and over 40 passion projects presented. And we'd like to thank you guys. Thanks, Ms. Skipper, and the rest of the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. And thank you to all of the BSAC students who are working to amplify student voices, which is so critical to our work. Mr. Maida, we appreciate your dedicated service and we wish you all the best in college. And now we'll put it up to questions and comments from the committee.
I just want to say, I, I went to the showcase and the passion projects were awesome. Just going around and being able to talk with the students about why they were picking the particular topic and, and what they, they felt they wanted to see us change. So it was well done.
I just have a very quick question. So, Mr. Maida, thank you for your service. You've been a great representative of BSAC with us for a while now. So, and best of luck at Northeastern. And congratulations on the Marion Hurd Scholarship. That's great. I'm just one curi-, and I love hearing about the passion projects, by the way. And I love the name of it, right? What are you passionate about? That's excellent. I'm just curious how many, and if you don't know it, it's okay, but, you know, the goal of BSAC is to represent all of our high schools, right? And I know how hard it is to get a rep from all the different schools. I think you had, you said like there were 42 students enrolled overall, but...
Yeah. I do not know the current total. Let me just, if I happen to have it, I do not happen to have it. I am sure that Ms. Denise Rory will have that information.
Okay, great.
Though I don't think we're missing too many schools.
Good. But it's so powerful when you're speaking for, on behalf of all the students, right? So, and to get input from all of them is very helpful.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. And enjoyed working with you.
I too had an opportunity to attend the, your last seminar and was duly impressed, not just by the members of BSAC that were presenting, but by the number of other students who would come. And I guess my question is, back at their high schools, how does the work that BSAC students are doing as part of BSAC, do these projects roll back to high schools? Do you see high schools picking up and as part of their own student councils taking on any of this work, impacting the schools?
Well, most, most students in BSAC are part of Student Gov as part of a position there. So they are participating within Student Gov. And circling back, with some of the, the projects that this committees have worked on, for example, the Adul- Adultism Project, they've created a professional development workshop. So that's going to be going into, into schools eventually. So...
That's great. Yeah. Right. Thank you. Do you have a question?
I don't have any questions, just comments. I was involved in student government, not in BPS per se, but at UMass. And I know how important to sit at the table it is, but also juggling, you know, schoolwork, family, and, and any, any other responsibilities there is. That's a lot. So I, I know you've inspired other folks at BPS, your, your colleagues and other generations to be able to sit at the table, ask the hard questions, and truly understand what the BPS system is. So you can actually like know what to advocate for, not only for you, but also for the overall community. So just congratulations. Looking forward to see what you're going to do after. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you all. Again, thank you, Ms. Parvex. We'll now return to public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you. We have 16 speakers. The first group of speakers is Stephen Magana, Kathleen Shorter, Erin Birmingham Anadu, and Amy Amaru. Stephen Magano, Magano, is not in the meeting. Next speaker is Kathleen Shorter. Kathleen Shorter is not in the meeting either. Erin Birmingham Anadu, I don't see in the meeting either. Amy Amaru, no, Amy Amaru is not in the meeting either. The next group of speakers is Emily Kavanaugh, Lisa Wong, Tanya Yang, Kate Michelbala, and Suleka Soto. Emily Kavanaugh, please raise your hand when I call your name. Emily Kavanaugh.
My name is Emily Kavanaugh. I have a third grader at the Manning, and I live in Jamaica Plain. Tonight, I'd like to testify about BPS's lack of caregiver engagement, a story that we've heard many times from other communities in the district, such as the O'Briens, West Zone, et cetera. Like, other parents at the Manning who were hoping to speak tonight, I have been very concerned about Principal Hart's treatment of students, parents, and teachers, and signed the petition anonymously, asking for an independent investigation to give all parties, including Principal Hart, the chance to be heard. This evening, the Manning community received an email from Principal Hart stating that she would be leaving the Manning for another position in, in BPS. And I'd just like to preface my next comment by saying I'm, I'm still processing this news. I'm, but I'm relieved to truly not be at my son's school. But I'm also concerned that BPS is trying to sweep this under the rug with no transparent grievance process that allows the caregiver community to come to a common understanding of what went wrong at the school. Furthermore, it allows BPS to possibly move her to another school community without unearthing the facts of how she implements BPS policy, works with teachers, and engages or doesn't engage with caregivers. Please, we are a divided community and we are hurting. There is no accountability here and no resolution. BPS needs to take a hard look at how this happened, particularly in regards to the conduct of not only Ms. Hart, but Elena Luna, Kristen Weeks, and Drew Eckelson, who continually tried to label her as a privileged or well-connected parent. We are not the first community of caregivers to be dissed by BPS, and probably not the last. BPS needs to do better, and we still need an investigation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three speakers are now sent into the meeting. Suleka Soto.
Hello. Good evening. Suleka Soto, BPS parent and a supporter of parents and families, which seem to be, you know, you know, always seem to be accused of, of lying, or Mr. Quoc Tran said today, present an alternative facts. I would just like to say that I am very disappointed in today's vote. And I just want to say that you all vote on alternative facts every single time. You decide to double down on top-down decision-making that is undemocratic. And again, there's no consequences for you all because you are not elected. It is saddening that you all continue to make decisions that pin communities against each other and do not, you know, keep up with the promises that you continue to make. You continue to disappoint the parent community, and it is you that are pushing parents out of the district. I, believe it or not, support BPS and believe that the, there should be higher quality of schooling for all children. But I don't think that should be done by dismantling schools that are already doing well. You all are just going about it in a very, very bad way.
30 seconds.
And I'll just say that, you know, you asked Dell, Dell and the team and the superintendent, what was the community involvement process? They talked about a city-wide community involvement process. What is the involvement process for the individual communities before the decisions are made? That was a clear question. Dell gave alternative facts, and you still voted with it. So again, committee members, you really need to be, like, I just need, we need an elected school committee. You guys are just very disappointed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Soto. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of, next group of speakers are Rob Garrison, Edith Brazil, Beving Kenny, and Karen Allen. Rob Garrison. Rob Garrison, please raise your hand and accept the, the prompt. Okay, so we will, we will continue with the next speaker. Edith Brazil.
Thank you. Three exam schools discussed every meeting. McKinley's three therapeutic schools never discussed. Why? Mostly black males. McKinley's are run like detention centers. Metal detectors, cameras, random searches, restraints, timeout rooms, safety offices, Boston Police referrals to DYS. An intervention team, working group, Ian Desi MOU showed no improvement. Consultant Dr. Green's August 2023 report states, therapeutic programming has never been fully or even partially integrated into the schools or its classrooms. Staff acknowledge feeling they do not have the training background or expertise to address the needs of these students. This has left staff with little or no guidance on how to handle the sometimes significant mental health issues. Dr. Green concluded the racial equity planning two recommendations were never enacted. His contract ended. Green New Deal suspended McKinley's rebuild, yet more cameras are being installed in the old building. Enrollment declined by two-thirds, 80% chronic absenteeism, numerous holes in the walls of the timeout rooms tell the story. Yet, in her first three months, Skipper modified the exam schools admissions policy for those already benefiting from BPS's racist structures. She did nothing to end the emotional, physical, and psychological harm to McKinley students. Skipper sabotaged-
30 seconds.
racial equity work by pushing out black leaders, and he viscerated racial equity initiatives we fought for since desegregation. She only hires those willing to do her bidding, ignoring and silencing authentic black voices. Yet, Skipper gets a pass of white privilege for upholding white comfort while reifying structural racism. Juneteenth, our Freedom Day marks another year that we demand accountability for black students from this committee
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brazil.
and the mayor.
I miss up. Thank you. Next speaker is Bevin Kenny. Bevin, can you please accept the prompt? We will try with Karen Allen first, and then we will come back to you. Karen Allen?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
Thank you. My name is Karen Allen. I live in Roseland, and I have two children at the Manning Elementary School. I'm here tonight because I want to express my concern about the way in which the Manning caregivers' concerns about school leadership and model change were handled by the district leadership in the last six months. I urge this body to initiate an investigation into how these incidents were handled, particularly by Dr. Luna, Dr. Weeks, and Drew Eccleston. In the winter, when the model changes were first introduced, our caregiver community asked questions. These questions went unanswered or were treated as inappropriate. For example, during an April school parent council meeting, Dr. Luna brushed off questions about data and controlled the conversation in such a manner that caregivers' questions were labeled as entitled. When teachers raised red flags about the school leadership and a toxic and divisive workplace for teachers describing manipulation and recklessness, they were given no pathway or support for these teachers around their concerns. When parents asked for a mediated conversation with the school leadership and the district, they were ignored. We have email documentation of all of this. On June 6th, when we sent to the district a petition of almost 100 signatures asking for an independent investigation into the school leadership, it was met with a response from Drew Eccleston 24 hours later, expressing full support of the principal and claiming to have spoken
30 seconds.
who said there was no problem. In the June 11th school parent council meeting, the caregiver community pressed Dr. Luna to state whether any families had been contacted in that 24-hour period, and she did not answer. She sat silently. We know that no families were contacted in that 24-hour period. We have been lied to on multiple levels, and it is unacceptable that the teacher and caregiver concerns and grievances were ignored.
I said shame.
Thank you. Bevin Kenny is not in the meeting, so we are going to go to public speakers on reports. Edith Brazil?
Thank you so much. I want to say congratulations to Diego Maida for his accomplishments. To expand college readiness to all students, strong literacy must be an accessible gateway for all students to ensure they succeed academically, professionally, and civically. Current research concludes that 95% of all students, regardless of cognitive ability, can be taught to read on grade level by the end of first grade. Yet, there is no improvement in SIP. Why? A decade of data reveals BPS's focus curriculum failed over 80% of Black, Latino, multilingual learners and students with disabilities to achieve reading on grade level by third grade, by evidence, by MCAS. Research says after fourth grade, poor readers are four times more likely to drop out of high school. After 10 years of failure with focus, BPS, instead of using an evidence-based curriculum, added foundations and hegemony to it. That is like eating McDonald's every day and saying, "I'm going to add water and vitamins to get healthy." Why is BPS now going to spend and waste taxpayers' money to find an independent vendor to refute over 10 years of data? Which links poor outcomes, which lead to avoidable special education referrals and parents who must fight for reading specialists, which BPS rarely have. Learning to read should be a child's right, not a fight. To achieve appropriate literacy, the superintendent must drop focus and be accountable for cutting the fat in central office, expanding school budgets, use an evidence-based literacy curriculum, and ensure that all schools have fully-funded libraries, fully-funded librarians, full-time literacy specialists, inclusion facilitators,
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Your time is up. Thank you very much. So Bevin Kenny was able to join the meeting. So please, you can start your testimony.
Hello, thank you. Thanks so much. Sorry I had to rejoin. My name's Bevin Kenny. I have two children at the Manning School, and I've been a proud BPS parent for the last seven years. I've been advocating within our school and the wider BPS community since 2020. And I've always noticed that BPS interacts with caregivers as if we're an obstacle or a pothole in the road to drive around. But the system's total disregard and disrespect for families has worsened over the years. At Manning School, a successful inclusion school, caregivers have tried for months to get BPS attention to our school environment and teacher dissatisfaction. We finally resorted to a petition asking for an independent investigation. It was signed by 70 current caregivers. And in a school of only 150 or so kids, that's a lot of caregivers. And 18 staff, many of those staff signed anonymously. Again, a large amount in a small school. During our advocacy, our school leader and BPS administrators called us toxic, problematic, and entitled. And our efforts to get BPS to pay attention have divided our school community and devastated our teaching staff and our teaching model. Our success in inclusion did not matter. And you've heard from many people tonight about the issues BPS has around engagement, especially around closure and plans around the West Zone, ELC. I would like the school committee to hold BPS accountable for this lack of engagement. In fact, a disrespectful attitude around caregivers. We are a very important stakeholder in the system and the only stakeholder who have and hold these students in every other hour when they are not with you. Here are concerns, and integrating our voices into your planning is critical. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. New business?
Nothing beyond just making sure that we're following up on like what we've just heard.
All right. That concludes our business for this evening. Our next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Wednesday, July 17th at 6:00 PM here at the Bowling Building. Like to, in this meeting, is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approve the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Happy end of the week. Stay cool.
Go Celtics.
Good night.